To our Bible study at the House of Abundance, San Antonio, Texas. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the power that is in your word to give wisdom and direction. We are here tonight to learn from you as we continue with our study of Moses. Give us understanding as we dig into your word. Help us to stay focused as we study it, so that it will continue to be a lamp to our feet and a lamp light to our path. Father, you're worthy of all honor and praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Today, we are studying war with Amalek and delegating responsibilities. Our study tonight will be under two subheadings, the war with Amalek, which will be found in Exodus seventeen eight to sixteen, and delegating responsibilities Exodus eighteen. We start with the war with Amalek. So we're going to read Exodus seventeen eight to sixteen. Exodus seventeen eight to sixteen. Now Amalek came and fought with Israel in Rephidin. And Moses said to Joshua, choose us some men and go out and fight with Amalek. Tomorrow I will stand on the top of the hill with the rod of God in my hand. So Joshua did as Moses said to him and fought with Amalek. And Moses, Aaron, and Hur went up to the top of the hill. And so it was when Moses held up his hand that Israel prevailed. And when he let down his hand, Amalek prevailed. But Moses' hands became heavy, so they took a stone and put it under him, and he sat on it. And Aaron and Hur supported his hands, one on the one side and the other on the other side. And his hands were steady until the going down of the sun. So Joshua defeated Amalek and his people with the edge of the sword. Then the Lord said to Moses, write this for a memorial memorial in the land, and recount it in the hearing of Joshua, that I will utterly blot out the remembrance of Amalek from under heaven. And Moses built an altar and called its name, "The Lord is My Banner", for he said, because the Lord has sworn, the Lord will have war with Amalek from generation to generation. Excuse me. Who were the Amalekites? They were the descendants of Amalek, a grandson of Isor, Jacob's brother. While the Israelites were still at Rephidim, the warriors of Amalek came to fight against them. Deuteronomy, chapter twenty-five, verses seventeen to eighteen. Deuteronomy twenty-five seventeen to eighteen tells us more about the Amalekites. It says, "Remember what Amalek did to you on the way as we were coming out of Egypt, how they met you on the way, and attacked your rear ranks, all the stragglers at your rear, when you were tired and weary, and he did not fear God." So this was now the first time the Amalekites were attacking the Israelites. In First Samuel fifteen, verse two. First Samuel fifteen, verse two. Samuel said to Saul, thus says the Lord of hosts, I will punish Amalek for what he did to Israel, how he ambushed him on the way when he came out of Egypt. So the Amalekites were sworn enemies of the Israelites. This war with Amalek was Israel's first spiritual conflict, even though the fight was fought physically in the valley. In this study, we have a lot to learn about what we can do to fight our own spiritual battles, the battles we have to deal with in our own lives. Spiritual warfare is real. The body made, the Bible makes this very clear. In Second Corinthians, chapter ten, verses three to four, Second Corinthians ten, three to four. Saint Paul tells us, "For though we walk in the flesh, we do not war according to the flesh; for the weapons of our warfare are not carnal, but mighty in God for pulling down strongholds." What Paul is telling us is that we cannot fight spiritual battles with physical weapons. Ephesians six, twelve, Ephesians six, twelve says us who we are fighting against. For we do not wrestle against flesh and blood, but against principalities, against powers, against the rulers of the darkness of this age, against spiritual hosts of wickedness in the heavenly places. Ephesians six, twelve. He goes on to tell us that we need to take up the whole armor of God, that we may be able to withstand in the evil day, and having done all, to stand. Furthermore, Proverbs twenty-one thirty-one, Proverbs twenty-one thirty-one says, "The horse is prepared for the day of battle, but deliverance is of the Lord." In this study of war with Amalek, we shall learn how to fight our own spiritual battles. The ordinary human being called Moses and the mighty man of God called Moses is linked by prayer. Moses had learned to come to God in all circumstances. The walk of faith is impossible without a life of prayer. The war with Amalek was Israel's first battle. Moses appointed Joshua as the general to lead the men into battle. Joshua was Moses' personal assistant for the forty years the people wandered in the wilderness. He eventually took over from Moses as leader of the Israelites after Moses' death. Moses went to the top of the nearby hill with the rod of God in his hands. With Moses were Aaron and Hur. Whilst the fight was going on in the valley, Moses held up his arms in intercession on the top of the hill. When his hands were raised, the Israelites prevailed. When they were lowered, the armies of Amalek grew stronger. When Moses' arms were tired, Aaron and Hur held his tired hands up, and Israel prevailed. Here, we see a good picture of the prevailing and persistent prayer of a righteous man. James five sixteen, James five sixteen says, "The earnest prayer of a righteous person has great power and wonderful results." Here, we also learn how important it is to support others, especially our spiritual leaders in prayer and by other practical ways. By holding up his hand, Moses showed his total dependence on God. Israel's strength and victory depended on their faith in God. They showed this by prayer and obedience in this situation. In Egypt and, in Egypt and the Red Sea. The Red Sea, it was that God who fought the battle. At the Red Sea, it was God that fought and won the battle. This principle also applies under the New Covenant. Christ has won all battles for us. He has overcome Satan and the sin of death. If we fail to pray and depend on God, we will eventually lose its protection, blessing, and favor. Our only hope of victory comes from relying on God. Thank God, we now have the privilege to come boldly unto the throne of grace, that we may obtain mercy and find grace to help in time of need. Hebrews four sixteen. Hebrews four sixteen. We have to be involved in spiritual warfare. The battle with Amalek was in the valley, but the real battle was on the hilltop, where Moses' arms were lifted up. Satan can attack us here also, as symbolized by Moses' hands being tired. We can be weary and too tired to pray. Satan can do many things to disturb our prayer life. If he succeeds, he wins the battle cheaply. Luke eighteen one says, "Men ought always to pray and not faint." And Matthew twenty-six, verse forty-one, Matthew twenty-six, verse forty-one says, "Watch and pray." Joshua used the edge of the sword against Amalek to bring victory. We too can use the word of God, the sword of the Spirit, to bring victory and fortify ourselves against the enemy. Hebrews four twelve. Hebrews four twelve, "The word of God is living and powerful, sharper than any two-edged sword." After the battle, Moses built an altar to God in an act of worship and called it Jehovah Nesseh, "The Lord is My Banner." A banner was a rallying point for defense and victory. And God himself is our Jehovah Nesseh. Moses gave all the glory to God. He did not give the credit for their victory over the Amalekites to himself, Aaron, Hur, or even to Joshua, who was physically in the valley fighting. We should always remember that God will not share his glory with any man. Isaiah forty-two, verse eight. Isaiah forty-two, verse eight. "I am the Lord; that is my name. I will not give my glory to anyone else." In this study, we have learned three important principles for fighting our own battles. One, total dependence on God. Moses stood on top of the valley with the rod of God. That rod was a symbol of God's presence and power. It was with that rod that he spurt the river Nile and it be turned to blood. It was with that rod that he parted the Red Sea. It was with that rod that he struck the rock and water gushed out. He did not just hold the rod in his hand, but he lifted it up in intercession to the Lord. As long as his hands were up, the Israelites prevailed and victory was assured. You remember David and Goliath? David was able to defeat Goliath by his total faith and dependence on God, not just with his sling and stone. Listen to his words in First Samuel, chapter seventeen, fourteen to forty-seven. First Samuel seventeen, forty-five to forty-seven. Then David said to the Philistines, "You come to me with a sword, with a spear, and with a javelin; but I come to you in the name of the Lord of hosts, the God of the army of Israel whom you have defied. This day the Lord will deliver you into my hand, and I will strike you and take your head from you. And this day I will give the carcasses of the camp of the Philistines to the birds of the air and the wild beasts of the earth, that all the earth may know that there is a God in Israel. Then all these assemblies I know, that the Lord does not save with sword and spear, for the battle is the Lord's, and he will give you into our hands." Total dependence on God. Principle number, principle number two, persistent and prevailing prayer. Persistent and prevailing prayer. My prayer without season says, First Galileans five seventeen. Don't quit. Push until something happens. Moses' hands were lifted up in intercession until the battle was won. And three, give God all the glory for your victory. And now we go on to delegate the second topic, delegating responsibilities. Exodus, chapter eighteen. Exodus, chapter eighteen. I'm going to start by reading the first twelve verses. I'm sorry, just excuse me, I'm sorry. All right. Eighteen, one to twelve. "And Jethro, the beast of, priest of Midian, Moses' father-in-law, heard all that God had done for Moses and for Israel, his people, that the Lord had brought Israel out of Egypt. Then Jethro, Moses' father-in-law, took Zipporah, Moses' wife, after he had sent her back with her two sons, of whom the name of one was Geshon; for he said, 'I have been a stranger in a foreign land', and the name of the other was Eliezer; for he said, 'The God of my father was my help and delivered me from the sword of Pharaoh.' And Jethro, Moses' father-in-law, came with his sons and his wife to Moses in the wilderness, where he was encamped at the mountain of God. Now he had said to Moses, 'I, your father-in-law, Jethro, am coming to you with your wife and her two sons with her.' So Moses went out to meet his father-in-law, bowed down, and kissed him; and they asked each other about their well-being; and they went into the tent. And Moses told his father-in-law all that the Lord had done to Pharaoh and to the Egyptians for Israel's sake, all the hardship that had come on them upon the way, and how the Lord had delivered them. Then Jethro rejoiced for all the good which the Lord had done for Israel, whom he had delivered out of the hand of the Egyptians. And Jethro said, 'Blessed be the Lord, who has delivered you out of the hand of the Egyptians and out of the hand of Pharaoh, and who has delivered the people from under the hand of the Egyptians. Now I know that the Lord is greater than all the gods; for in this very thing in which they behaved proudly, he was above them.' Then Jethro, father, father, Moses' father, father-in-law, took a burnt offering and other sacrifices to offer to God. And Aaron came with all the elders of Israel to eat bread with Moses' father-in-law before God." The news of God's mighty deliverance of Israel from Egypt had spread and had reached Jethro, Moses' father-in-law. So he came with Moses and his children, two children, to meet Moses in the wilderness. Moses told his father-in-law about everything the Lord had done to deliver Israel from Pharaoh and to the Egyptians, and how he, the Lord, had solved all the problems the people had encountered along the way. He was giving a testimony of the Lord's goodness to Jethro. When was the last time you and I told someone about what the Lord has done for us? Giving testimonies about the Lord's goodness is a very powerful tool for winning others to Christ. Moses' testimony definitely had a powerful impact on his father-in-law. Hear what he said after hearing Moses' testimony. "Blessed be the Lord, who has delivered you out of the hand of Pharaoh and who has delivered the people from under the hand of the Egyptians. Now I know. Now I know." Obviously, he didn't know before, he didn't quite know that the Lord is the God of Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob. But now, having heard this powerful testimony, he can say, "Now I know that the Lord is greater than all the gods; for in the very thing in which he behaved proudly, he, he is above all of them." Then he offered sacrifices to the Lord. Then there followed a large celebration, and they shared a sacrificial meal among themselves in God's presence. Let's read the rest of the chapter. Beginning from verse thirteen. Exodus eighteen thirteen. "And so it was on the next day that Moses sat to judge the people; and the people stood before Moses from morning until evening. So when Moses' father-in-law saw all that he did for the people, he said, 'What is this that you are doing for the people? Why do you alone sit and all the people stand before you from morning until evening?'" And Moses said to his father-in-law, "'Because the people come to me to inquire of God. When they have a difficulty, they come to me, and I judge between one and another, and I make known the statutes of God and his laws.'" So Moses' father-in-law said to him, "'The thing that you do is not good. Both you and these people who are with you will certainly wear yourselves out; for this thing is too much for you. You're not able to perform it by yourself. Listen now to my voice; I will give you counsel, and God will be with you. Stand before God for the people, so that you may bring the difficulties to God; and you shall teach them the statutes and the laws, and show them the way in which they must walk and the work they must do. Moreover, you shall select from all the people able men, such as fear God, men of truth, hating of virtuousness, and place such over them to be rulers of thousands, rulers of hundreds, rulers of fifties, and rulers of tens; and let them judge the people at all times. Then it will be that every great matter they shall bring to you, but every small matter they themselves shall judge; so it will be easier for you; for they will bear the burden with you. If you do this thing, and God so commands you, then you will be able to endure; and all these people will also go to their place in peace.'" So Moses hid the voice of his father-in-law and did what he had said. And Moses chose able men out of all Israel and made them heads over the people, rulers of thousands, rulers of hundreds, rulers of fifties, and rulers of tens. So they judged the people at all times; the hard cases they brought to Moses; but they judged every case, every small case, themselves. Then Moses left his father-in-law. Then Moses let his father-in-law depart, and he went his way to his own land, delegating responsibilities. Excuse me. The day after Jethro arrived, he saw how Moses sat down to hear the people's disputes. With so many people and few legal guidelines, it took Moses all day to judge the cases. Jethro proposed a better arrangement. His first advice was for Moses to restrict himself to only what he could do. Moses was a man of extraordinary ability; yet even he could not do everything alone. No one person has all the necessary gifts or the necessary time. We must work with others. His advice, Moses was to be the people's representative before God and bring their disputes to him. He said, "Teach them God's decrees and instructions, and show them the way they are to live and how they are to behave." Verse twenty. Moses' work was to speak to God and teach decrees, and the decrees and the laws of God to the people. He was to look for and train leaders for God's people. He was to look for and train leaders for God's people. After all, Jesus trained twelve disciples. The early church elected seven deacons. Paul trained elders for the churches he established. What were to be the church's qualifications, ability or capability, they must be able to hear cases impartially and to judge wisely. Fear of God, the fear of God is the beginning of wisdom. Reliability, the judges must be trustworthy. And integrity, they must hate dishonest gains. Moses listened to his father-in-law's advice. Advice can sometimes be misleading. Many will come to advise you. They want you to consult, they don't want you to consult God. And if you don't follow their advice, they say you are proud. Every advice man gives you must be taken to God. Seek the Lord's clearance, guidance and direction. And I'm happy that Jethro told him, God so commands you. That is, if the Lord leads you to do so. Verse twenty five tells us that Moses chose able men to do the work, made them rulers of thousands, of hundreds, of fifties and of tens. The hard cases were brought to Moses, but every small matter they judged themselves. Now, let's look at the principles involved in delegating duties. One, when God has a job to do, he calls an individual to do it. Two, when the task becomes too much for one man, God calls others to come and work with the first individual. Three, God holds the first individual responsible for the work done by the other individuals he brings in. Later in Numbers, in Numbers, chapter eleven, when Moses complained that he could not bear the burdens alone, God took of the spirit that was upon him and gave it to seventy elders. However, Moses was still directly responsible before God for what he and the seventy elders did, even though he had delegated responsibility and authority to the seventy elders. For the Holy Spirit is made more effective by its extension to other lives. The Holy Spirit is the one who directs the work of God and delegates responsibilities. Spiritual gifts are given to believers so that the body of Christ may fulfill its purpose on earth. And I would like you to read on your own First Corinthians, chapter twelve, First Corinthians twelve, four to eleven, and Romans twelve, four to eight. Four, Christian leaders must not act like God, clinging on to their ministries as if it is life and death, as though the ministries are their own. Their ministries belong to God. And finally, another reason for such hold tight is less and less dependence on the Lord and consequently an increasing confidence in one's own strength and ability and judgment. So we get so busy that our time of prayer and dependence on God gets less and less. So we can see this chapter offers a very good advice for delegating responsibilities. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the lessons you have taught us in these two topics tonight. We are aware that we have spiritual battles to fight in this life. Help us to depend totally on you in fighting these battles for their, our victory lives. And Father, Christ has delegated a lot to us as his followers, such as witnessing to others, taking care of the poor and needy, healing the broken-hearted and so on. Help us to determine your call upon our lives and give us the grace to perform our assignments without neglecting the most important aspect of spending quality time with you. We pray in Jesus' name, amen. Join us next time as we discuss the giving of the law and take another look at Moses. Please read Exodus nineteen, twenty and thirty two. Exodus nineteen, twenty and thirty two.